Good morning, this is a board decree of the Lone Star College Board Trustees is now called to order at nine oh two A M. Before I be going further, let me go ahead and take roll call, that's okay. Trusty Boyd, Trusty Pierce here, Trusty Wilson here, Trusty Sullivan?
Here.
Okay, and do we have anyone joining virtually?
We didn't call none in.
Oh, I'm sorry, apologize.
I'm late, Trusty Moreno, but I'm here.
Sorry, okay. Jim?
Yes, sir.
Trusty Kane?
I'm here, present.
And Trusty Breslin?
Present.
Pardon that. Okay, and can I ask if anyone's joining us virtually?
Like someone is joining, is joining at this moment. Sure, someone is joining at this moment.
Okay. Trusty Stoma? Okay, well, we'll continue. Oh, there he is, hey, Mike Stoma, can you roll call?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, great. Okay, certification, Chancellor Castillo, could you please provide for clarification as posting certification and posting?
Yes, sir, I certify that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the law.
Thank you, sir. We have now come to the portion of our meeting where we hear from the public. Nathaniel, has anyone signed up to offer a public comment?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Having no speakers, we're going to sign up to speak this morning, then move on to our next ten items. Now, before I move on, I introduce our Ms. McBride. She will give us a presentation again, we appreciate that you're taking the time to help me to fire this meeting. But I prepared a couple of remarks that I'd like to read right now. Welcome to our annual board retreat, a time for reflection, foresight, and collaboration. First, I want to acknowledge our collective accomplishments over the past year. Together, we have navigated challenges as well as celebrated milestones, including the selection of our new Chancellor, Marcus Castillo. We are fortunate to have you as leader of this, at this, at the helm. Today, our Chancellor, our new Chancellor will share with us a strategic vision that reflects our mission and values. And more importantly, addresses the evolving needs of our students, faculty, and staff, and the broader community we serve. It's a roadmap for success grounded in collaboration, evidence-based excellence, and a steadfast commitment to making a difference. Today's discussions, feedback, and insights are invaluable as we collectively refine and support the strategic direction of our college. This retreat is a unique opportunity to engage in meaningful dialogue, forge stronger connections, and reaffirm our shared commitment to the success of our community. So let us embrace this day with open minds, spirited discussions, and a united vision as we all set, help set the stage for an incredible year of achievement, growth, and positive change. So welcome, and let us begin our journey together. And with that, I'll introduce Ms. McBride. Thank you, oh, go ahead. Okay, so, uh, Mike, uh, trusty Kane? Okay.
Introduction, I report number ten.
That's fine, thank you for reminding me of that, okay, one thing we decided to do, and I appreciate that, and I think it's going to be very helpful, that we go around the table and introduce ourselves and allow us to speak in regards to this process of having to, you know, this retreat. Go ahead.
Thank you, I, yeah, I appreciate taking just a few minutes to do that, and I asked the Chancellor, um, I guess a month or so ago, if we could just take three or four minutes each and just share with everyone a little bit about ourselves. Because what I have found over the years in terms of working with groups is that when we understand each other a little bit better, when we know a person's background a bit better, it just improves the overall dynamics of the group. And increases effectiveness, efficiency, and just promotes better outcomes. So, um, what I, what I'm recommending is that we just, as I said, take three or four minutes each person to just go around the room, tell us a little bit about where you grew up. Tell us a little bit about your family, tell us a little bit about your work experiences, um, where you went to school, that kind of thing. And just be mindful of the fact that because we have a lot of items on the agenda today, we don't, um, take too long with each individual because it's easy to start, to start talking about these things and, and time flies by. So, if that's acceptable to everybody?
Yes, sir, definitely.
Okay, all right, so who'd like to start?
I'll start.
Yes, ma'am?
I'm going to be short.
Yes, ma'am?
Okay. Who am I? I'm a wife, I'm a mother, I'm a nana, I'm also a sister and aunt. Now, uh, what I'm doing so far, I'm working on my bucket list. The first thing is I want to take my grandkids across country on Amtrak, on Amtrak. And of course, if one of their parents is going to have to be available to have babysit because I, you know, I know I can't roll away Amtrak to find them because they'll get away from them. Okay, and another one would be, uh, I want to write a book. I started on a book, but you know how they do, you know, it's been about fifteen years since, uh, I don't even know where it is. I don't, I don't even know where my notes are, but I guess I'll have to restart. Uh, another thing I'd like to do, I'd like to start a podcast, and that's the new thing, I'm trying to come into the twenty-first century. And maybe I could do that, I don't know, a friend, a colleague, it doesn't matter, but I'd like to do that, that's, you know, I see everybody else doing it, I think I can do a pretty good job. And, uh, the last thing I'd like to do is take a five-state casino trip. Hop one state to the other, and, well, that's my thing, you know, I'd like to do that. Okay, I'm originally from Louisiana, well, I grew up in Beaumont, but by way of Louisiana. Married a San Antonio man, and, and I ended up in San Antonio, and then followed him, I ended up across the country. And, uh, hey, you know, we ended up in Houston, what can I say? That's about it for me.
I think that's very interesting.
Yeah, but thank you.
Why don't we go around the table, you want to go ahead?
Okay, sure. I grew up in Illinois. My dad had multiple jobs, he was a coal miner, he was a prison guard, he was a taxi cab driver, and he retired as a postal employee, my mom was a sales clerk. That was downstate Illinois, when I was twelve, we moved to the Chicago area, so I went to high school in Evanston, Illinois, just outside of Chicago, and I went to University of Illinois in Champaigner Manor, and got a teaching degree, went downstate, and I taught in a small school district in southeastern Illinois. I taught fifth grade and I coached junior high basketball. We left there in nineteen seventy-one, moved to Texas, got a job teaching in Clear Creek I S D. And I was teaching and went into administration in Clear Creek, left there after a few years, went to Klein, was in Klein for a number of years in administration, left Klein, went to Fort Bend I S D, did administration for a few years, returned to Klein, and then spent my last twelve years in Klein as superintendent. So all total of forty-seven years in public education. The superintendent's job was just absolutely the best job that I actually did, it was a fantastic job. I'm, my wife is a native Houstonian, I met her in the early seventies. She went to Waltrip High School, went to U of H for a couple of years, I did all my grad work at U of H. We have two children, our daughter is a digital learning specialist at Klein Forest High School. And she has two children that, uh, she and her husband live in Klein I S D, both of her children go to Klein schools. And our son is, uh, works for Chevron, and he's a supply chain and staff development with Chevron. And he has four children, and they live in Spring Branch. So, overall, um, I've, I've said this to so many people, and I, I don't know if I've ever said it to you, but if anybody ever decided to write a story of my life, it would read like a child's fairy tale. Because from start to finish, I've had it incredibly good, I mean incredibly good. So I would say for every one thing that went wrong, probably ninety-nine things went right. And that's just, I've just been blessed.
That's all. Okay, um, my turn, I'll be short. Um, my name is Aisha, Trusty Wilson, Aisha, I'm married, um, I grew up on the northwest side of town, um, in Carverdale, and, um, I graduated from Cypress Falls, and then, um, had a life in between, I came back to Lone Star and, uh, graduated at Lone Star, um, got my associate's degree, I'm married, no kids, uh, friends, my nephew, um, I mean, I don't know, it's, I'm just a community activist grassroots person, um, trying to fight for change in the community, and that's like my self theme. Aside being, um, supportive of my friends and my family, I really am fighting for change on, on the inside so we can reflect on the outside, so we, everybody can kind of get the same type of services that we had, so that's just me, I don't do much, but that's it.
Thank you, uh, record is blank, that's up to, so we've, uh, has joined our meeting. Uh, I'm going to go ahead and go this way, uh, Mr. Sullivan, would you like to go next?
No.
No?
We've all gotten to know each other pretty well, and I appreciate the chance just to serve on board, it's something I wanted to do for a long time. I take particularly, uh, particular pride in being the first Kingwood trustee, if you will, alongside, I presume, my associate of March from Lone Star College, Kingwood, and then went off to U of H for my passion. Just enjoy the chance to be a part of the board, I appreciate the confidence that the board and the chair put in me as the chair of finance committee, that's important to me, uh, pretty private, pretty quiet, uh, stay in the background and just adjourn and try to develop a plan and work hard for it though.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
And the beautiful daughter.
That he won, he's just that beautiful.
Trusty Breslin, would you like to?
Well, I, I guess I'm the newest, and I, I just want to say I really have enjoyed my time on the board. Uh, I, I served on a, as you all know, on Willis High School for twenty-one years, that was a long time. And, uh, I enjoyed my time there, but this is, this has been a real treat, and, uh, I'm getting, getting my feet wet and trying to learn and, uh, but I'm enjoying it. Uh, I grew up in Madisonville, little, little town, it's still a little town, it hasn't grown much, uh, since, since I lived there. And I still have family there, um, I'm a five-generation Texan. Uh, I have, uh, my hus- husband and I, um, have been married almost forty years, uh, have four grown children, uh, one's an attorney, two are in education, one's in finance, uh, I have twelve, we have twelve grandchildren, twenty-one to almost two-year-old. Lots of kids in between, they keep, they keep us busy, we try to go to all of their activities, and they're all involved in lots and lots of things. Uh, I'm an educator, um, my master's degree is from San Houston, uh, we love San Houston, but most of my grandchildren and children are Aggies, so I'm not to like Aggies as well. I, um, dropped out as a teacher, and then was a, um, principal and central office administrator. Didn't do the superintendent thing, but, uh, was an adjunct professor at San Houston for twelve years in the literacy department, and really enjoyed that. Then I thought I was retired, and my youngest daughter, who's also an educator, decided we were going to open a private school. So we did that eight years ago, and our school has just grown and grown and grown, and, um, but I love it, I really, really enjoy it. It's a, a Christian school, and, you know, there's, there's a, there's a niche for everything, and, uh, it, it, it's really, uh, it keeps us busy, but, um, I like being busy, I don't, can't imagine being home, just popping my feet up and, you know, eating chocolate and watching television, although sometimes that might be nice, but, uh, I like to stay busy. So, anyway, thank y'all for putting up with me.
No, thank you, and?
Thank you for coming.
You said already here? It's already, you're at one.
Uh, yeah, here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, thank you, uh, Trusty Boyd?
I, I was born in Kansas, raised in Michigan, in the Detroit area, and, uh, graduated from Wayne State University. I won't tell you where I'm from. As a civil engineer. And, uh, practiced up there for a while, and then got an opportunity to come down to Texas. They fooled me, they, they, they brought me down to, to interview in October in San Antonio. You know, and you come, come down, you get a long ride out of the airport with palm trees. October weather in Texas is pretty good, and, and I came out of a, out of a storm of four feet of snow a couple of months before that, so.
After a while.
I was expecting loving. Married and kids, um, my current wife, my last wife, is, uh, an educator, or, or was an educator, she retired for the second time or third time a couple of years ago, just a couple of years. And, uh, she, she still has her hand in. And she did everything, and was a principal in several schools here in Boyland. And, uh, I'm just trying to guide her into doing some books, I mean, I, I think, I think there's a, there's a gold mine there. And I practiced civil engineering and development projects like this, in fact, I think we actually did this, this project here. Several times, as a matter of fact, this flower, flower, and I retired a couple of years ago, so. And, uh, and I've been on the board for twenty-six years, I'm like, wow. And I, and before that, I, I had taken other, uh, jobs on in the humanity, in the chamber, and, um, united away. So, uh, I think I have kind of a grasp on a lot of the things that the school district, the college district, um, has to deal with.
Thank you, Wood.
Yeah. That's all.
Trusty Boyd, um, and I, uh, Trusty, Trusty Sullivan Boyd, you ready to go?
Yeah. Hi, I'm trustee, San Diva, those of you who may know me as Maria. I've been a trustee for over seven years. Um, and I really enjoy being here, I really enjoy, uh, what we do here, especially, you know, we see the stuff that we do to sort of promote and help our kids achieve their goal in graduation, me and Maria. I, um, former student of Aldi I S D, from there, I went to, uh, Tomwell College, and then after Tomwell College, I graduated and went to the University of St. Thomas for a, uh, degree in international studies and political science, a degree. And then afterwards, I was very lucky to, uh, work for Catholic charities for a couple of years, and then after working for Catholic charities in their immigration department, I worked for a state, uh, member of the Texas House of Representatives. Current in that commission, I mean, they're the district director, I love to, I love my job, all the way I do, especially because, you know, you have, um, a great tendency to help individuals, so I'm really proud of that. And I'm proud to be here, and I'm proud to be amongst all of y'all and colleagues, thank you.
Thank you, Trusty Sullivan. So let me go ahead and, uh, talk, have Mike's, Trusty Stoma, kind of come in and talk to us, can you do that?
Oh, I can, I apologize for not being there, I just started a couple of projects for Phillips sixty-six, and I'm kind of drinking from a fire hose and needed today to do some work. I really don't know where to start, I mean, my life has been a long and winding road to bring me here. But I was born here in Houston, St. Joseph's Hospital, Michael Charles Stoma. My mother called me Michael, my, my friends and colleagues called me Mike. Uh, raised on the North Side, uh, went to Olson and Francis Elementary Schools in Aldine, Aldine Junior High School, graduated nineteen seventy-one from MacArthur High School, so I am a North Side boy. And you can't take the North Side out of the boy, you just can't do it. I got caught up in the Vietnam draft, and so I joined United States Air Force, spent over two years in Southeast Asia, United States Air Force. My, my specialty was electronics, more specifically onboard navigational computer, navigational systems, radar, comm. systems, et cetera, worked on B fifty-two's, KC one thirty-five's, F fours, U twos, um, C one thirties, and, and a few others. Having been discharged in nineteen seventy-five, I actually started my, our formal education at North Harris County College when they were still holding classes in Aldine High School. And of course, uh, moved when they opened the campus, North Harris Campus, so I know the North Harris Campus fairly well. Uh, during this time, I worked as an engineer, uh, doing, I should say, electronics engineering assistant, where I did prototyping with the first eight sixteen-bit processors, creating what you would know as PC applications before there were PCs. I could probably, at, at one time, program and, you know, four different assembly languages, uh, once a long time ago. And I was, then I went to work for the Houston Police Department for a couple of years, had a cousin who was a captain who pulled me in, and, uh, I worked in their communications, uh, division, uh, mainly focused on keeping their, uh, citywide communications. But also, one thing I did, because I was, uh, you know, seniority was a big deal to them, still is probably, uh, where I'd worked the midnight shift, so I learned to do investigations, it taught me how to do investigations to support surveillance using low live video and, and audio and other state-of-the-art stuff back then. So I, I know how to investigate, it's not, if I want to find out something, I can find it out. It's a, it's a skill I've used off and on over the years, but I hardly don't use it anymore and don't want to, quite honestly. Um, during that time, uh, one of my colleagues there was doing part-time instructing in electronics technology at North Harris County College. So he said, look, we need you part-time instructors out there, why don't you come apply? And I did, and they accepted me, and I taught there a year part-time, and, and then they made me an offer to teach full-time, which I, I was happy to take because I wanted to get off the night shift, and, you know, I never intended to stay with HPD. It was a stepping stone because I also started working on my MBA at that time, uh, which I had gotten my bachelor's degree earlier from San Houston State, then my MBA from University of St. Thomas. You know, the story goes on and on, from there, I, they made me, I taught for about five years at North Terrace, the electronics engineering program, from there, I launched out and contracted, doing, doing computer programming and analysis. I was, I was pulled in on a project, NASA project, and was fortunate to work on both space station, space station and shuttle programs, where I won awards for my work, I did a simulation, uh, programmed a simulation in Ada language for the space station that simulated their environment, environmental controls. Then went on, was asked to participate on an engineering team that re-engineered the Mission Control Center, or actually, we created a future state architecture for the Mission Control Center. In which case, I have an award which I'm most proud of, it was Sustained Engineering, Sustained Superior Performance Award. Uh, in a long way, and it hangs on my wall up here today, uh, where I have a, actually, an ink pen that flew into space and back, it was the pilot's pin on S T S forty-three. So that, that's a cherished memento, uh, for me. Coming out of those accomplishments at NASA, Exxon picked me up, started my, my career, if you call it, in oil and gas, because I worked mostly from there, in oil and gas, uh, this insignificant work in exploration, uh, helped them design a system that projected cumulative oil reserves in the world, everybody's reserves, not theirs, just theirs. I worked with a group of, of engineers to do that, I programmed it and, and made it work. Uh, and that gave me a lot of notoriety, plus they knew my communications background. So again, you know, one, one thing leads to another in life, as they say, and I was pulled into a, an effort, essentially transformed the, the upstream, which is exploration production of Exxon. So I participated, participated in a study with two other Exxon folks, we made some recommendations, and Exxon, uh, management, uh, to the CEO of Exxon approved it. And, uh, that launched beyond another, another career path where I set in as a consultant to the creation of, of an Exxon company. It was, at the time, it was called the Exxon Upstream Technical Computing Company. Uh, that was, that was really unique in that it, it, we created it on the principles of Edwards Dimming, which is kind of the father of, of, uh, continuous improvement, and the person really responsible for leading the re-engineering rebuilding of Japan after World War Two. So, I mean, I can go on and on, in the, in the nineteen nineties, uh, I won seventy million dollars of business for S E I C and N C I. I served Compath Computers as a regional marketing manager for, for two years. And, you know, won that business and managed most of it from a revenue and P and L perspective, always made my numbers, always exceeded my numbers. And then got caught up in the mergers and acquisitions in nineteen ninety-nine when E D S bought System House. And that's when I started doing project and program management. Uh, and there are some other things that went on at that time, my parents, uh, were in their decline, I took, uh, I took these projects to stay near home because I traveled immensely throughout the nineties. I mean, I still have well over five hundred thousand air miles, um, by the time that was over. Uh, so I, I, I took care of them, and I did this, this work. And, and I've just been doing what I've done, you know, since then. Uh, the, what brought me back to Lone Star, of course, is my relationships that I had formed there back when I was teaching, mainly through folks in the A F T, to be honest. Where, you know, I was a founding member of the A F T back then, we had our challenges dealing with Bill Thorne, which some, I've talked to some of you who've not all We had our challenges dealing with Bill Thorne, which some, I've talked to some of you, not all of you about. So they brought me back to, to run for District One when District One was first created due to the court order essentially demanding that we have single-member districts. And so that, you know, that brought me into this, this position. You know, I have two children, three grandchildren. I continue to work in my profession because, one, I like it. I'm good at it. You know, I've traveled the world. You know, I play plenty of golf. I play golf three to five times a week. Join my grandchildren when I can. I've helped, helped people as I go, which is important. But by and large, I'm in to live long and prosper. Do what I want to do. Enjoy doing it and just keep going. And, and see where this life takes me. So that's, that's it in a nutshell, folks. Thank you.
Indeterminate, Stoma. I guess it's me next. I promise to keep it brief. What I'm, everything I'm thinking about while I'm listening to everybody share their experiences or backgrounds is just sort of diverse with the people we have and different experiences that we bring, that we bring. And it's really helpful to what we're trying to do here, what we're trying to achieve. I think for me, just you know, I grew up, I was born and grew up in South Texas and Laredo, Texas. And then I went to college at University of Texas and later a master's and graduate school in Texas State, which equally is southwest, southwest Texas State back then. You know, what kind of brought me to Houston was my initial, my first jobs included working for several members of the state legislature in Penaltz City. And one of them hired me to, he is your staff boss, asked me to come to Houston. And so, no, that was, that was in the 90s as well back, young guy. But my interest in, in passion for public service kind of was instrumental in helping me get my next position, which was at the University of Houston Downtown, where I was heading, was the director of, the director of a program called Houston Resource Center, which was a program designed to reach out, engage students, first-generation students and minority students to get scholarships. So that was, to me, that was just passion, you know. And then and that, you know, and that love for public service led me to my current position over at Metro, where I'm a senior member of the public dignity team. And the term senior has taken on a different definition now. Because I'm older, I started out there 23 years ago, it was fun. But really, all that kind of informs kind of my decision to run and to be on this board. Other than trustee Boyd, I've been here the longest. I think I came on when one of our college districts created single-member districts. So I took on that opportunity and I probably served my community. I think my focus and my framework for serving is engagement, working with communities. I'm also a servant, a mayor appointed me, the previous mayor appointed me the most Houston district's first. And so kind of enjoyed working with the different players in terms of helping my community. So I really like that. So I think one other thing I just wanted to add is something that that kind of, you know, motivates and drives my efforts to contribute to this endeavor here today and, and as a trustee is when I first served, I was elected to serve at the United States School Board. Well, back. And it was a great experience. But one of the things that I've often shared with some of you all about, it was about the reform, school reform movement, those same things at the time. And that, you know, to the trainings that we went through and participated in, we learned the significance of, of making sure that understand that it requires sustainable effort to improve school history. Brand new organization to that part, to that part. Especially sustainable improvements over a long time. So I, you know, so that's kind of then enforced me to want to kind of almost commit, state that message often about how governance, the governance world and that we, we own in this case, as trustees, you know, is very critical and instrumental for the success of management. So I'm trying to put that in because, as, you know, because I think it's kind of feeds into our discussion here. That's my success. Okay, any other comments? Anybody forgot anything? Anybody forgot any information? We'll continue our discussion. It's really nice, really great to get to hear that from everyone. It really is important. Thank you. Trustee Kane for suggesting that. I think really that's, that's what motivates us, that's what drives us, and we'll continue to. Thank you. Okay, so before we started that, I was about to introduce this man, Frye. Who will give us, who will greet us? Who are you?
She stepped out.
She just stepped out.
Oh, okay, okay. So let's go ahead and pause for a minute. Is that okay? And then we'll continue. We're resuming our meeting to get ready to go into closed session. With the board trustees, in accordance with section 551.001 of the Texas Government Code, we'll move into closed session under the following provision of the Act, which is section 551.074, personal matters. So we stand adjourned to close at 9:44. Thank you. Here we are now, reconvening, open session. And we will now break for lunch at 12:02. And we will reconvene shortly. Okay, welcome back. I would like to reconvene this board retreat and its 101 team. Go ahead. We can proceed with our next part of our program.
Thank you. Thank you all so much for having me this afternoon to talk with you about the budget overview. So I know I have a tough time slot. We've all fed you and now everybody's a little sleepy. So I hope I don't put you to sleep talking about financial numbers and all of those things. So I did prepare a high-level overview of what the last 90, 120 days have looked like in the office. I felt like it was important for you to see some of the work, some of the foundational work specifically that we've been doing. So I wanted you to kind of have a glimpse into the office, the team, and what we have been trying to go back to basics and really reset some of our foundational core. So in the first 90 days of myself being in office, we've really worked to rebuild the treasury team. We've really been working to build the budget planning team, working on hiring additional secret agents and certified and credentialed financial professionals that are really at the heart of the institution, really trying to work on those specific areas and also trying to create career ladders in this field for our teams. Because right now, there was not always a place to maintain the staff because they didn't necessarily have a way to go or a way to progress. And so we've been working on developing efficiencies, on ways that we can expedite processes for the campus and streamline things. Because sometimes there's a direct correlation with the number of staff that we need in order to process any, you know, if we have 20 steps to every process, and there takes a lot of manpower to do that. So we're working on those foundational core items to see how we can make some of our manual processes more efficient, how we can work on process documentation and allocation of workable hours. So again, as you've heard the chancellor say, there are 40 hours in a week. How can we make sure that we're maximizing the time of our staff, but being respective of that work-life balance for their teams? And so we've been working on realignment of procurement. When we've done some surveys, we understand that procurement is one of the areas that is really sensitive to the rest of the system and the teams. And so we're intentionally having conversations around spending and tracking and procurement and those sort of things. So we're really getting into that. We've also recently moved our accounts payable team out of procurement and moved them to more of that accounting function. That is just a key function of really the type of skills that those individuals do. And again, moving them a little bit from the process side of the house to the accounting side, just to make sure that there's a little bit more accountability. We've also been integrating the offices and then specifically working on culture. G3 survey actually indicated that a lot of our divisions had a lot of work to do. We had a lot of opportunities in terms of culture to work on, training, staffing, and standardization of process and communication. So those are really the key areas that we've been trying to work to make sure that we have improved upon those things and that we're communicating that with our team. Again, just to work on the culture and morale. So I thought it was important for you all to know, as we talk about treasury and talk about revenue being a key part, taxes being a key part of our budget, that we have been rebuilding the treasury team. They are responsible for property taxes, bond management, investments, cash management for the whole entire system. And we've been really working on having them be more involved with a forecasting process, very involved in being more strategic with our financial revenues. We've also been working with them on the utility forecasting and state appropriations, specifically the House bill that I know you've all come to learn about. I think it's important as we go in there to say, when we took over the treasury team, we had, of the seven existing positions, four were vacant. So we've really had, spent a lot of the last several months rebuilding that team from the core up and foundationally rebuilding a lot of the things that are going on in there. So we'll be sharing the PowerPoint with you. A lot of this was just for reference and institutional knowledge so that you are aware of some of the changes and the updates that we were going through. So if you have questions, please stop. A lot of this was just foundational information that we wanted you to know. We've also spent time on the budget planning team. Obviously, we had five FTEs in that department for the entire system. They're just, you know, we're five people that were literally running the budget for the entire system. So we've worked to promote and again, build career ladders for those individuals. And then working again to utilize technology to make our processes more efficient and to work on additional measures to make sure that we're being more strategic with our time and our talent. Again, I alluded to it a little bit earlier, really just bringing the procurement team back to basics. Really just working to bring that team, rebuilding them, utilize new modules, reorganization to those areas. We've been undergoing some audits in that area just to look for operational efficiencies and ways that we can improve. And so we've been working on those things. And again, just wanted you to kind of see in terms of our area, what we've been doing to again, make sure that we had some key positions and some key folks into those next level positions that are CPA. We just hired Brett Yal, who's our executive director of treasury, and he is a certified treasury professional. So again, not a credential we've had. And so we're working on getting some additional staffing and credentialing in those key areas. Also wanted you to know that we continue to work on a lot of the construction projects. I know this is some of our higher-level things, our visibility. It's what our community sees. We did recently, I know many of you were there for the grand opening of the performing arts building that we completed. We did finish the library restoration at North Harris. And then substantial roof replacements going on in a multitude of our buildings. But I just thought I would share with you that we have 75 active construction projects going on right now. And over $100 million in active projects. Everything from our Magnolia satellite to Houston North Victory and Kingwood flood mitigation. So a lot of key projects that are moving and working on by the facilities team. We are also working on cosmetology relocation from Chi to North Harris, back to the campus. We're working on Montgomery Building theory model and then law of East Aldine Lockers and Shower Facilities. We're working on Montgomery building theory model and then law of East Odd End lockers and shower facilities for the program. So again, that was just a little bit of a high level overview of the first, you know, ninety days of what we've been working on to kind of get the system and the team back to basics. So I wanted to allude to, when we talk about system goals and things that we're wanting to do in FY twenty five, I thought it was important to focus on student success and retention and our priorities related therein. We really want to focus on meeting students' basic needs, foods, books, you know, assistance to support them. Those are going to be the things that we're going to look to highlight this year. What is needed to retain, graduate, articulate students to a four-year degree? I know Chair Stoma asked in December what I felt like was the biggest obstacle that we would face financially, and it really is, we just have to do a good job of retaining the students that we have, helping them and help them graduate and have a credential that they can help better their family. And really, if we're doing those key fundamental things, then a lot of the other metrics and financial impacts will follow. And so that continues to be a focus of our team, the system team, as we're working on those things and as we're looking at where we spend our dollars. Those are key variables that we're going to continue to look at into FY fiscal year twenty five budget. We're also looking at what credentials of value are in those high occupation or high needed areas that are going to give needed wages, right? Because we could obviously give somebody a credential or a degree in something that doesn't automatically mean that they're going to improve their wage level after that point. So we really want to make sure that we're not only graduating someone, but that they're graduating at a place that they can feed their families, you know, in something above, you know, minimum wage or a poverty level. So we are looking at careers that will change that trajectory. So yes, we want to get you through school, we want you to have a certificate, but what is going to help you advance your socioeconomic status and help you change that trajectory? So those are the key variables when we're looking at programs. We also have it as a priority for FY twenty five to make sure that we're looking at a true cost of living adjustment for our team. We know nothing's getting cheaper, whether we like it or not, everything costs more, and that's true for our staff and our faculty. So what we're going to do for FY twenty five, of course, with the board's approval as we continue to build out the budget, but what we'll be recommending is a one percent across the board for employees. When you're looking at the Southern Region CPI, the index is about three point four. So we have seen inflation come quite down a lot. We saw key variables, sometimes sixteen percent last year, eight percent, depending on cost of goods or which, you know, variable you were looking at. So when we look at the Greater Houston CPI, somewhere around three point five. So the average for our area is still kind of hovering around four percent, or at least as of December was the last time we had an update for that. So we are looking at that cost of living compensation, and that we'll show you again. This just kind of measures where we've been with CPI through the Houston Woodlands area during the last time frame. So again, we are hoping to do that full four percent for FY twenty five across the board, and that will not exclude any staff members, that will be a true across the board for everyone. What the second key factor that's going to impact our teams will be what we're looking at as a key collaboration with human resources to develop a strategic methodology for raising the salaries of our faculty. I know many of you have seen the chart where we're pretty close to the bottom in terms of our peers and community college in terms of what we pay faculty, and it's getting harder to recruit and retain faculty. And so we acknowledge that we have to do better and we have to make sure that not only are we doing it across the board, but we are trying to gain some improvement to actually be more competitive against our peers in the system. But we want to do that, you know, from a systematic approach. We don't want to do it where we give increases to everyone and then we still, you know, everyone's not happy because there's serial disparities. So we really want to dig into that and have a way that we're doing it based off of discipline and the individuals and that matter. So we'll continue to bring that back for you, but we are working with human resources on that plan. Any questions about any of that so far? I know, don't want to go too fast, but I want to make sure we can get to some of our other key factors. So really, the heart of what we're looking to do for our area is truly, I think you've heard us say it before, is forecast, budget, and spend. We want to do as good of a job as we can on forecasting so that we can maximize our spend and maximize our budget for FY twenty five. And why that's important, as you know, is because if we overshoot any of those or underestimate, we're not allowed to actually spend that in any budget year. So we, you know, we want to make sure that when our faculty are growing and we're supporting students and we're doing, hitting all those key metrics, that we can celebrate that success and that we can actually utilize those funds to be reinvested back into the campus. So it really is important that my team do a good job at forecasting where we feel like we're going to be with revenue estimates so that we can fully take advantage of those numbers and we can work with the chancellor on key priorities. We can work with the board on key initiatives that we want to see done. And so really, it is, my team, my staff keeps joking that we want to have that kind of as a motto on the wall, is forecast, budget, and spend. So that is really at the foundation of what we're rebuilding for our team.
This is Mike Stoma, excuse me. You asked for questions at your fault. Could you go back two slides? Ah, go back one more if you would. Well, go back to where you're showing the, that one.
That one, okay.
Yes, that one. All right, you're, you're talking about tracking, which I know is tradition here. Salary increases to cost of living. I mean, you're, you're one of the only industries that, you know, do this, really. There are a few others. But how does this, how does this factor with compensation based on merit? Out of this, based on contribution? I mean, someone could sit back really and draw their four and a half percent or four percent per year, and I'm not, let me be clear, I'm not talking against it, I'm not saying not do it. I'm just trying to get a, an idea in my mind. Okay, I, I as an employee can just lay back, you know, I guess do my job to some satisfactory degree. I assume that each employee, based on the chancellor's approach, will have some type of objectives or goals to meet. You know, in order to have, have any type of merit or, I don't know, compensation based on production. How does that factor in here? I'm just trying to understand, you know, someone who goes the extra mile, whether they be a, you know, a faculty member or in student services or even, even in doing administrative work. There go above and beyond, and how does that factor into these cost of living increases?
It's a great question. So it doesn't, that is not, those two do not have a correlation right now. The four percent that we've recommended and that has been the, really the historical practice of Lone Star is a true across the board. However, there are, obviously, as you've indicated, there are industries, there are places that do do true merit increases. That has not been something that we have researched or given, given a whole lot of project to. It has come up, is it whether that's something that we want to look at? And if that's definitely something that the board wishes us to look at or if we want to look at for future, but for this particular year, that was not something that was considered. It would be a true four percent compensation and merit would not play into the factors of the dollars that you see here.
Well, I, I, maybe I'm wrong, and certainly I've been wrong, but I thought the Texas Legislature passed a bill, was it House Bill eight? Somebody can correct me on that. That's essentially, we're going to go to some compensation based on production. I think that's kind of what the chancellor's working on, certainly that's what we're working on with the chancellor, for people to set goals and objectives and be judged, their performance be judged against that and their compensation being tied to whether they hit their goals or objectives. Am I incorrect in this assumption?
Well, House Bill eight specifically refers to the funding of how we receive revenue for state appropriations based off of like student group. It doesn't directly correlate with like employees themselves. Again, that is something that, you know, we, it has come up because there are pros and cons with merit, right? Because some people, it is a function of, of how their supervisor views them.
Yeah.
As opposed to, so it's kind of arbitrary. So I definitely think, again, if that is a strategic goal that, you know, we wish to go forward, that's definitely something we could investigate. I don't know that something like that could be stood up for FY twenty five and done appropriately so that that is done off of metrics that we could truly make sure that the employees were being measured fairly. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. I mean, next time you, you talk about methodology, and I was going to lead there, but, okay, let's say, you know, our measure, our institutional measure is, of course, the student satisfaction, student, how should I say, benefits to students. Shouldn't everybody's compensation be mapped to activities or processes that lead to the benefit of students? I guess you could generally say, well, that, that happens, but there's no real mapping to that. A mapping would be that indeed, from an institutional perspective, there are the key performance indicators, which I think the chancellor's working on. Then, then everyone's performance should map in some way, shape, or form to those key performance indicators in order to see the contributions they're making to overall student, student growth, student success, et cetera. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I think, I mean, fundamentally, foundationally, you're correct. I think what's hard about that is sometimes, again, that's where I have to say the methodology. It's easy to say, yes, we're going to do four percent merit pool and base that off a function, but it's harder to roll out the methodology because when you think about impact to students, a lot of times you think about the advisors, the faculty, those forward-facing people. So you and in general, if it's not set up correctly, you would want to give those individuals more, whereas maybe your custodial staff is not quite as seen as a function of the impact to students, but they really are the first impression that a student ever sees, right?
That's right, that's right.
Something's not clean. So that's, that's where you get into, yes, in theory, it should be based off of merit, but you have to make sure when you do that, that it's rolled out correctly so that again, people are truly compensated for what, you know, what, it's not just a, it's a function of the student's success, but also a function of how their supervisor views them. So it's, it's kind of.
No, I don't mean to interrupt you, but so that leads to your methodology, correct? Am I following you here? It meets, it leads to your method, flip, flip over to your methodology slide. Which is the next one or two, that one. All right, so, okay, you got to determine a strategic methodology. Give me an example, just an example of what a strategic methodology would be.
So when you're talking about faculty, so if we were to do, if we were just to say, okay, we're going to raise everybody three percent across the board, regardless of discipline. If you don't do it strategically, then you still have separated, you can separate people. Because if someone has a PhD teaching in a STEM, that's a high accounting profession or a chemistry discipline or a flight instructor, right? So not all disciplines are created equal in terms of the, the level of education and discipline it takes to teach it. So that's why I say, we really want to look into it to make sure that when we're doing the increases, because we could give a four percent across the board and still make people unhappy.
Right.
Right, and so that's where the methodology comes in, is we have to do that from a matter that is strategic, that we're making sure that we don't then further segment groups, and then people are like, well, I have a PhD, why did I only get this? Whereas Sally has a master's, why are we getting the same, right? So we're trying to come out.
No, I don't mean to interrupt you, but in my business, there are methodologies. We, we can pick and choose to use based on, you know, whatever the fit we're, we need, right? It's kind of a, I see methodologies as tools, by the way. So are there proven methodologies in education that you would consider employing here at Lone Star System?
Not that I'd be prepared to speak to it this time, because I think it would, this is going to be a joint effort between finance and HR, and it is going to be a collaboration between the two of us.
But you have, you have somebody who can frame this for you, understands what a methodology would be, right?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough.
Okay.
Kathy, can I say this? Education, I've been in it over forty-two years, is, is, is a difference than regular business. Many lawsuits have been formed about merit pay, we started a career ladder. It's, it, you know, it, it, you just can't, children are not widgets, okay? Let me just put it that way. And every time the state came up with something, it was never subjective. And like you say, it goes to the supervisor. Well, if the principal likes me, he doesn't like her, you know, blah, blah, blah. And I can remember when the principal put me over the career ladder, I thought, oh my God, I'm going to get killed. Because people had to turn in, that was, that was their procedure. You turn in a notebook, you have to say, well, how can I, that, that, that went down the line? Well, you know, most of people are lying because all the notebooks look like. Now, who, it's, it's totally different in education. When you start talking about giving merit pay, be ready for lawsuits. All students are different. If you got a higher level student in STEM, I got a developmental English, you know, class, who do you think will be top of the game? It's going to be that, that STEM class. It's very hard, I mean, it's hard, education is trying and trying, they've got sued every time. Because students, when you're dealing with people, and especially students, it's a whole different ballgame. And then again, you got, you know, it, it goes up, it's a people business. And it's not subjective. I mean, if I don't like you, you know, there it is. How fair am I going to be? I'm just saying, I have been on the end of being sued before with, with, with this, all this merit pay. And in education, I've never seen it work yet, not with students. Not yet, now maybe there's, you know, I can be proven wrong, but I'm just saying, we talk about people here, not widgets.
Kristy?
Yes, sir.
My purpose in this question, not, was not to recommend or suggest any specific way. My purpose of this questioning was to see, to understand your thought processes. You understand the difference? To see how you're going to approach things and how you approach things. That, that was my purpose in the question, it's not to go sell merit pay. So I appreciate you, I appreciate your answers, thank you.
No, happy to. And again, it is one thing that, you know, we definitely want to consider because there are individuals who want to be rewarded based off the amount of time that they put in. So we want to be intentional about that. And I definitely think that, you know, as we're looking at future things, that is something definitely to consider, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions or, sorry, Chair, I don't need to. All right, I believe that's where I was, I apologize. So when we talk about revenues, and so to Chair Stoma's question, we kind of started introducing House Bill eight a little bit, is really when we talk about our state appropriations, that is a piece of our, our budget, if you will, tuition and fees, property taxes, and then we do have a small percentage of our budget on auxiliary or miscellaneous funds. So I know this came up back in the fall, and we've had a lot of questions about revenue and don't want to block your way, I apologize. When we talk about the history of our budgeted revenues, wanted to show you that this is what we budgeted. Budgeted does not always mean actual, right? Again, that's where we try to forecast what we can. Sometimes we hit that right on the head and other times we don't. But when you're looking at our five-year history of budgeted revenues, you can see that for the most part, local taxes still remains about forty-eight percent of the pie. So as you can see, the largest piece of our pie is our tax base. State is twenty percent, students are thirty, and then auxiliary funds are two percent. So it is a small fraction of what we're operating under. So when we talk about it, the board does have a goal of equalizing those items. And as you, you have talked about many times, we are falling short of that. And I don't, not, it's not necessarily today's conversation, unless you wish it to be. But the point in bringing this up is that it can still continue to be a goal, but it's not going to necessarily be a realistic goal that we are going to equalize those items. So again, it's not necessarily a recommendation to make a change, but only to kind of level set to make sure that we all understand that while our goal is to equalize, I do not recommend that. It's never going to, it would be a, we'd start to lose students if we had to raise tuition enough, and we're never going to outpace that percentage. We can make strides and we can do it. But again, I'm going to always err on the side of sensitivity to the students because we don't necessarily want them, you know, outsource their ability to pay our prices, right? We are, we're proud of being local, we're proud of serving our students, and we want to make sure that we are at a place that is fundamentally where we don't, you know, cost too much, right? So a five-dollar cheeseburger is a lot, you know, it's different than a ten-dollar cheeseburger, right? So, yes.
Yeah, you know, that's an interesting point. I mean, as you point out, we're not going to be able to get to those numbers. You know, if, if, if right now the state is forty-eight percent and local is, what is it, thirty?
Students thirty percent.
Thirty, and then local is twenty, we're not going to be able to.
Yes, sir.
So I'm wondering about the goal itself. Is that a goal that we want to continue to, to strive toward? Or is that something that we need to take another look at?
Yeah, and that's why I brought it up. It's really, it's the board's decision, obviously, and so I'm not here to, to make recommendation or to say you should or you shouldn't. I just bring it to the forefront to say, I want, I do want you to realize, I don't think it's realistic. So as long as you understand that, that I think that's obviously, you know, a conversation to be had, but I, we're never going to level set. If we're to do so, we would have to out, you know, this, it would be on the student's back, and that would never be something that I would recommend.
Do you know why that goal was raised there in the beginning?
I don't have that context, I apologize. I don't have that context, I apologize.
So I remember, uh, it was, yes, I remember because it ha, it happened while I've worked here. It's a relatively new policy section and the intent, as I understood it, was to ensure that students paid their fair share. So that as property taxes raise, that students would be. Um, asked to contribute their fair share. Um, so I think if, if, to Dr. Beon's point. If the goal is. Let's be conscious of the fact that every once in a while, we are going to have to raise students a little bit to try to equal it out. And that's one thing. If the goal is, you know, we want one for one parity. We don't think that's realistic.
Correct. That's a great point. That's exactly, that's the.
Can I add something to that? Um, one, I don't disagree with you. I think it's early to think about adjusting the formula for policy. Because the state's already now saying. That community colleges might not get the money that they originally said we would get. So we've got to really kind of think longer term. And see what the state's gonna actually do. They said they were going to give community colleges a buttload of money. Now they're saying, whoops, maybe not so much. In fact, we might just cap it at ten, ten percent growth per year. So those discussions are very fluid and then the legislative session begins in January anyway. So I think stability right now is probably better than trying to.
Yeah.
To adjust policy.
Yeah. So like I said, again, I did not, I did not come with a recommendation and just to bring it up to say, I just want to level set and say. It's not something, you know, that we're, that we're going to achieve right now. And so again, as long as the hospice of is that we will intentionally try to. Make sure that we have everybody pay their share, he will. Um, we're not going to quite get there, um, the way the, the way it's phrased. And I did, um, I believe I shared this with the Audit Finance Committee. I did not remember that this had been shared with the full board. So I just wanted to, uh, because we did uh, receive an additional eight million this year as part of Houseville eight state appropriations. That sounds like an extremely a lot of money. I know. In my world, individually, that's a lot of money, right? So, um, when we say eight million, it's hard that I also feel like I talk outside my mouth when I'm like. Uh, it's not, but percentage wise, right? So I, I caveated to say, and, um, so at my house, it would be, so. Um, but here, when we talk about this, so I bring this up to show you that we got an additional eight million dollars. That change in state appropriations of eight million dollars changed our delta of that pie, if you will, one percent each way. So eight million dollars is about one percent of our overall budget. So that's why I just thought it was important to kind of share that with you, just to level set, because again, eight million dollars, right? You know, many of us may, you know, say, okay, that's, you know, a lot of money, but for us, it's one percent of our overall budget. So we just wanted to show you that in terms, so it did change state appropriations up and tax down one percent. So then as we're looking at that, I wanted to show you the budgeted. For the versus the forecasted, and again, you see that one percent pie shift. So eight percent, one percent each way. Any questions or thoughts about that? Okay. So I also wanted to show you, I always thought it was important to give an idea is when we talk about forecasting, we do our very best this time of year. To put into play what we feel like are going to make up those four pieces of the pie. And when we look at it, of course, Fund Ten is our property tax revenue. So this uh, current year that we're in fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, we anticipated we would get somewhere around two hundred and twenty million dollars in tax revenue. Currently, based off of current day collections, we're short about two point three million dollars. Sometimes that's about houses, people filing appeals, lots of reasons, people not paying their bills. People, all those factors play into the reason where we guess, you know, take a really good, you know, educated guess as to what those are going to be based off of tax rolls. And then we're short there about two point three million. However, when you start to look at state appropriations, we're up. Eight point four, so eight and a half million. And then when we look at student revenues. We're up one point seven and then miscellaneous five thirty. So this kind of shows you when we're looking at overall, that's why budget. And actuals are often varies, right? So that's why you're going to see oftentimes two different variables, two different numbers. Um, and that just, you know, and again, these will continue to evolve. You ask me tomorrow, these would look different, right? Because we're continuing to collect fees and tuition and dollars um, every day.
Kristy?
Yes.
Yeah, Mark Stone again. Uh, given, looking at your property tax revenues and the. The current accounting, the two point three million shortfall, how does that compare historically with the same time? Say last year, year before, the year before that? You know how, is it, is this a, a normal thing? Is it a, a not, a abnormality? Will this straighten out? What do you think?
Yes, sir. This is actually a little bit under the last two years. The last two years though with COVID. Uh, there was a, you know, a little bit more default or lack of payment, but this is in trend. This is not necessarily out of the line for what we would anticipate. Um, and again, we will still continue and people will still compete, continue to pay taxes throughout the year. So this is just based off of uh, what we had for, you know, year to date as of now. The week, and sometimes people still pay even through June, will still be collecting, you know, off of the tax rolls, if that makes sense, but this isn't. Anything that's um, you know, stands out significantly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. So when we talk about that again, a delta, so what we forecasted, when you look at that, you can see. Not every target hit exactly where we thought, but in essence, we're at a delta difference of about one point eight million dollars between those four sources. So about eight point three million over what we anticipated that we would uh, achieve year to date. And so I think um, Trustee Sullivan stole a little bit of my thunder here when we talked about Houseville eight, but. I appreciate that. It, it made my blow a little softer. Yeah, you've got it. It's, you read ahead in the book, so I appreciate that. So. Um, so again, just as we figured out how we got the appropriations for last year. The state did the things that sometimes the state does and they changed the rules of the game at halftime. So now we are playing mid-year under a different set of rules. We just got the new data set last week that they've asked us to test. And uh, we are running through those numbers and as um, we've indicated, they allotted a pot of money. And the coordinating board did the very best they could is we could figure out how to allocate that pot based off of variables. And I think after the very first few payments, they realized. We're not going to be able to keep up at this pace, right? We're going to overspend this pot if we don't. You know, kind of modify this metrics, which is not surprising because again, when the legislature gives you a dollar value. And then tells you to make up the rules to figure out how to get there, right? They did their very best and now they're recalculating and resetting. When they realized that money's not going to last if they did not make an adjustment. Uh, so again, um, you know, as we talk about that, we talk about G one. The, the focus of G one is on uh, financial accountability and responsibility, but it specifically highlights. About state appropriation. And while I do think state appropriations are important. I would be remiss if I did not advocate that really. When we talk about G one, we really should talk about all the pieces of the pie. We really should not just focus on the state piece. We really should focus on all four of our variables and how that leads to the strategy and the success of our institution. So again, as we look at those things, all four of those are key factors. On the institution itself and not just state appropriations, because again, we have no control over a lot of those metrics. But if we graduate, if we retain, if we give students, you know, get them graduated. Those other variables will fall in place in terms of state appropriation. So. Uh, again, that's just one of the things, if I were to recommend, I would like to suggest that G one possibly be updated to. Um, take that into consideration. Um. Part of the credentials, the values and the fundamentals, and again, don't expect you to memorize all this now and I'll share with this and if you're interested. Any other additional details about Houseville eight. Uh, but for the most part, the biggest factor change that they've come out with in the last week. Is um, as, as Trustee Sullivan said, it's the ten percent that they think they're going to cap, ten percent. There's still some uncertainty. We feel like that's pretty. Pretty safe then at this point that they're going to cap us at ten percent. The other thing that they have stopped is what we, we refer to as double dipping. And so in a couple of the categories, we still double dip, but specifically in the fifteen hour credit. Uh, methodology, we can't count a student who's a dual credit student fifteen hours and then if they transfer to a four-year institution, count them again. And then what was happening is some of those institutions were also counting that same person. So they're trying to now in the methodology help us to sort out that that student, we're only getting credit for that one time. Um, and so that change alone, if we were using those metrics right now. So the new formula that they gave us, if we use that right now, we will receive about four and a half million dollars less, just in that one category. And overall, about six million less. Now, so if that's of the eight we received additional, we would really still have only come out about two million dollars difference. However, that doesn't take into factor any growth. That doesn't take into factor any changes they make between now and then. They are also meeting again in April and July, so that's why it's really hard for us to really know exactly. And I'm just trying to, you know, be as honest as possible that this is an ever-changing uh, model as they're rolling it out. Um, and so it may continue to evolve, but it is a three-year rolling average. So as we have higher increased years, just because they've changed the metrics, doesn't mean we won't see growth or growth in numbers. Because we're, those uh, academic years are also rolling. If that makes sense.
The importance here is just increase, right? Not only to do the defense, but also enrollment.
Yeah, yeah. And I would say, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. So we want to have to put ourselves in that situation to what the state might or might not do, I guess.
Right. And that's what we really do kind of control our own destiny and that's what's that. It's hard to chase those dollars. Some of the schools that I feel like we're chasing that a little bit that. Are going to feel bigger impact from this because some of the things they were trying to do initiatives. May prove out to not be financially beneficial for them now. But again, if we just continue to retain even twenty percent more students and get them through and get them graduated with a credential. Yes, then we will, you will see the numbers naturally, uh, because we're doing the right thing by students based off this new appropriation, those dollars will follow.
So in, in terms of the total dollars that we receive from the state. I know we've been very optimistic about Houseville eight. In terms of increasing those dollars because of the things that we do. So. Am I hearing you say that maybe we, our optimism is a little. Over the top at this point in terms of what we can expect in fiscal year twenty-five based upon Houseville eight funding?
Yes, I think, I think just trying to level set expectations that I think that we will still, Lone Star will still come out of this. Better than we were on the other side. Um, however, I don't think it is the um, windfall that we might have anticipated or it might have been perceived to have been. Especially as we talk about this cap, you know, because if there's no cap, if we grow ten thousand students, right, that exponentially. Look, but if they cap us, right, then the state piece, there is a limited amount. Um, but what we've really determined is there is only so much in the state bucket to go around. And there's still the thing, we're all still fighting for those same dollars. So I'm not saying that it's negative. And not saying that we won't still be in good financial shape. Just trying to kind of tear that enthusiasm back a little bit that. We still shouldn't take our eyes off the prize, right? I don't want to look at the new shiny thing. Where we still need to focus on, again, student success and doing those things. Uh, and so it's important. But we don't want to put a hundred percent of our time into something that's only about twenty percent of our budget. So just trying to be realistic and level set in that regard. So I hope that answers your questions. I think we still want to be positive, but just not.
Can I jump in?
Yeah, definitely.
I want to speak for myself, not for the administration, when I say this. I think we were given entirely too optimistic. Uh, expectations of what the coordinating board was going to provide for community colleges. I mean, I remember Steve saying, and I'm not, this is, I'm just calling it like this. I remember Steve saying. We're going to have more money we don't have to do with. Well, we heard that a lot. So then our expectations were high. But we've got to be smart and, and I've always had it in my mind. The state's not going to let anybody have more money than anyone. It's just not. So looking back at, at our experiences. So with that said, I've kind of been, that's why I was telling you, we've got a, and, and there was a little pushback and I appreciate that. But I was saying, we can't let the system, Lone Star, just go run with what they think is going to happen. I don't want to wait till the end of the process to go, well. We really need to back up now. That's why I said, as the finance committee, I think we should, should stay in touch monthly. Remember me saying that? And there was pushback. Uh, well, we need to let them do their job. Well, they're going to do their job, but we're also the finance committee and then we're also the board. And we can't go with what Steve and Jennifer told us because. It's not panning out.
That's right.
So we need to lower our expectations and. Exercise more control and oversight. But not to the point of do this or to do that, it's just to assist the administration. In removing those overly optimistic projections.
Right. So people are listening.
We listen, simply, that's why I like saying next year.
Yeah.
Um, that's kind of where I was going. And I wasn't trying to, I mean, I've got more stuff to do than to worry about what they're doing. But also know that we got value.
Right.
Especially sometimes political value that we can bring back and that's what I was doing. So that's why I said, I want to check in every month. I don't want to wait till the end of the process and then have to backtrack. And I think you're on the right track. It just, throw all the projections out the window. And let's go back to the basic budget process that Lone Star has used for years that's been successful. Long-winded answer, I apologize.
No, that's a, that's a good comment. Let me ask Kristy. Have your team verified? What you came in with? In other words, just what, what Sullivan was talking about. Have you taken the budget and the predictions that you were given? That was determined by another team of people. And assess them as to the. Reality of it. As if, you know, to the point where you, you would say, and it sounds like that's where you're headed here. Uh, to say, well, geez, you know, it was an optimistic budget. Here are the impacts, which you're pointing some of those out. Are you prepared to make recommendations? Uh, or when will you be prepared to make recommendations on a revised budget? If indeed that's what we're, we're going to. Is that?
Okay.
Can you comment on that?
Yes, sir. Okay. So there's a couple of different points there. So I'll try to address each one individually and if I miss something, we'll come back to it. So in what we were given is the budget year that we were operating under right now, FY twenty-four. I'm not going to be recommending that we make any changes there. That is already approved budget, the budget that we're living in right now. And so we do still think we're going to come out eight million in the good. If all things keep tracking in the revenue slides that I showed you. So I think we're fine there. So I don't know that anything necessarily was wrong with FY twenty-four. I do think revenue was sorely underestimated. Which allows us not necessarily to spend all of those funds in a budget year. Um, that would be only the negative. However, to the second part, in terms of what we're looking at, I think it does go back to the heart of what we're saying. Is yes, I do think that there was some level of. Optimism with future growth and state appropriations that is not realistic and that is I am trying to level set now. And to, in terms of validation, we just received, so we have verified. Where the eighty-six million in state appropriations for FY twenty-four came from. So we can tell you. How we got that based off of each category and each formula. And for FY twenty-five, based off the new data set we received last week. Our team has recalculated that and now we know under the new metrics what that would look like. However, at this time, I'm not prepared to. Tell you what I think those numbers are going to be for FY twenty-five and part of that was because. They're still changing the rules. They're still. You know, uh, moving with the formula. However, we have been promised at a meeting earlier this week that on April twenty-sixth, they gave an exact date, which scares me. So I'm going to say May, we're going to supposedly get a forecast of what those actual dollars for FY twenty-five will be. So in April, I will know. Better what both tax revenues will be and what we feel like state appropriations will be. And I think at that point, I would be able to come back with a little bit more. Certainty, as much as one can be certain, um, with those numbers of where we, we're going to come in at FY twenty-five. So.
What are your thoughts? The payments we've received so far? The payment process is different than it has been.
Correct.
Oh, so, so what are your thoughts there?
So they told us that our, so we received two of the payments already. So the third payment should come in June. And so I don't have any indication that they're not going to give us what we've already allocated or been told we would be allocated. Um, they have talked about these true-ups, you see here, which scares me a little for twenty-five and what that means. Um, we don't have any indication that they're going to true us up. Um, if, if they, if we got more than what we're supposed to, they're not going to make us pay us back. As they're equally not going to make our peers who didn't hit their numbers pay back, right? So both perspectives. So I feel very confident of it. I just don't know that we're going to. I don't know that we're going to get quite to where we were unless there's significant growth, you know. Uh, the, where it gets uncertain is because we're doing these three-year rolling average. I start with a new year. Right? And so some of that, we're going to track off COVID, some of that, we're going to pick it up. Um, but then in the call on Wednesday, they even said they may get down to where they're only looking at the best of our three years and not a rolling average. So right, that's why the, it's just hard to know. Based on our growth and if we keep doing the right thing. Based on our growth, and if we keep doing the right thing, I think we're, we're still going to come out ahead. Um, but if the cap is at ten percent, then, you know, we just have to be cognizant of that. So. And we want to make wise. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Sorry. You talk really quick, but that's okay. I just tried to find a way to get in.
Sorry.
Yeah, and, and you're, and you're, the way you're going to manage going forward. Uh, you know, we, we in the past, while I've been on the board and, and I'm sure Dave and Art can speak and Miriam can speak differently. You know, we've had a pretty sad timeline during the year where we, we have steps of budget review leading to our final, you know, approval in August and, you know, et cetera. So what do you see? How, how are you planning to kind of keep us up to date? And get to that point of budget approval with this team? What's your thoughts?
Yep, great question. So I did just show you key dates and timelines that have been kind of where you, uh, as a board have operated before. I don't see any need necessarily to change any of those key deadlines. Because in the past of you've received, uh, to my knowledge, or at least what I'm seeing in the content, updates in May. Um, and then again in June with the final approval in August. So I don't feel like that there's any reason that you can't receive additional updates. And if you want them more timely, of course, we can always, uh, provide any information that you need. I think we will know a better idea of the budget in May. Anytime before that, we would just be estimating. So I think May we would be able to have, uh, so that's what I'm shooting for with our team. Is to know in May where we're going to sit and where we're, you know, where we feel like we're going to come in with, uh, both our tax and state appropriations. Because we should get the certified tax role or the, at least the first round of what we think those are going to be in April as well. So my, my goal is that our team is going to really dig in in April for a May idea of what the first version of that budget would look like.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
And I guess the hope is if they don't tweak after May.
Yes, and as you can see, I'm going to go back a slide. They're saying in July that they, you know, so that is the, where you may see the first version is more conservative than the second, just because, um, you know, now we're all, we're going to look at ways that we can do that where maybe we can estimate where we think we're going to be. And then kind of hold that back on the expenditure side so that if we do get it, we can still allocate it. But we're not going to spend it until we know for sure that it actually is going to be received, especially given the, uh, corrections mid-year. I'll tell you, a lot of our peers in the system, this one scares them a little bit because what that true-up means, right? So it's one thing, it's like, hey, you're in the middle of a year, are you going to come back and, you know, say, I'm not getting this and I've already based my budget off of that? So we're trying to get a better definition of, of how that might impact us. So. So all great questions. So any?
So let's say we get our third payment in June. Let's say they decide they, they're not going to be able to do the third payment. What, what's the?
We don't have any indication that they wouldn't give us our third payment for this year. So.
Yeah. People change minds all the time.
Yeah, you're, that's a fair question.
Yeah, I want to know what, what's our plan be in case they don't.
Um, haven't given any thought to that. We would, um, I will tell you, we're up eight and a half million, you know, with that factor. I mean, we're, we're very financially, you know, we, we have a lot in reserve. Obviously, that would, if they do that, there would be peers around us that would be hit a lot harder than we were. So if there is a shiny side of the rainbow, that would be it, right? So I don't think that from a political standpoint, in a political year, we would see that. Uh, and I mean that in the nicest way. Um, so I don't think we would see that because I don't think they would be reelected again. If that, you know, but it really is the coordinating board making a lot of those decisions. But again, I don't anticipate, would not, that is a fair question. And we would just have to deal with that and. No, it's a fair, it's a fair point.
I get expect what we're supposed to get, but also what we don't mean, you know, where to evolve.
But this is all beef, but I know you were saying that we're financially, you know, we basically say Lone Star has money. This, I'm throwing this back. Why is it that we are not at the top of the rung? I, I thought everything I heard about Lone Star is so great. Why about how faculty not paid? But you said, wow, we're like number three. It's wrong in the areas. What's up with that? I mean, and I'm running around saying that we best pay college in town. Where did I get that from?
I don't know. I can't, I don't know where the, that comes. Yeah, so we are, uh, I will tell you, in terms of our peers, we are lower to the bottom of the pack, maybe third from the bottom. I'm trying to remember. Third or fourth from the bottom of the community college. I'm sorry, I have that chart. I was trying to remember. Um, based off of, you know, there's potential, even getting four and six percent would only still get us to the middle.
I, I had no idea. I always thought we were the place to work. I mean, where, where all these.
Better than work for the best place to work or something like that.
Who would want to work somewhere, you know, you getting paid the third and the third rung? I mean, that's not, something was not right with these surveys.
And I do want to qualify, that was with faculty. So when we're specifically.
That's what I'm saying, but that, that's not.
So to be fair to the G three survey, that was a big concern expressed in the G three survey was pay, which is why that is what we're focusing on, right? Like there's a tailor now, tailoring to the surveys. Which is why Dr. Bian had a slide that said we are focused on trying to get faculty increases.
Thank you, Dr. Bian, because I was always under your clue. Under the assumption from previous quote surveys, that Lone Star was it, but I knew better.
Well, we are a great place to work. I would just say we're not hitting the top of the, uh, the rung with pay. So.
Did you say that to get us to the middle of the pack would take four to six percent?
I would, uh, and I don't want to speak out of turn, so I'm just trying to go off of memory and some calculations. If I remember correctly, at a six and a half percent increase for faculty, and this is just very arbitrary and, and that it would get us to maybe seventh in the chart and based off of this, the, you know, kind of the average of community colleges. So.
The, the other question I had, we talked about reserve funds.
Yeah.
Um, what, what is our current funding dollars?
Yeah, I actually have a slide of that. So I'll share that with you momentarily. Other. And so again, I know it's your summer, you ask about topics and dates. So I hope that slide there in front of you is helpful. Again, those are all target dates and still what we would shoot for in terms of, uh, you know, uh, kind of key deadlines. But I'm also happy, uh, to trusty Sullivan's point to try to give you some monthly updates of House bill appropriations as we get updates and approvals. So.
Yeah, that would be good. Just a month, monthly update. But this is good. This schedule is good. I have no issues with it.
So then again, as we're looking at tuition and fees, you know, we talked about this very early on about the percentage and how we are looking at our student portion of that. Uh, again, just looking at what you all have agreed to in the past, um, and what was in the five-year plan. And so what we are proposing based off of that five-year plan that the board has previously recommended, um, would that, would be that for this fiscal year going into FY twenty-five, that would be impactful. The first time students would see that would be fall, would be a, uh, eight-dollar increase for in-district, eighteen for out, twenty-three for out-of-state, and three for dual credit. And that was a previously agreed upon strategy, um, that the board had taken and approved. And so based off of that, we will be proposing that that be, uh, what is implemented in terms of fees, uh, for FY twenty-five. Yes.
So question, uh, if there's an eight-dollar increase in, in district tuition, does that take us to like a a hundred and ten, a hundred and twelve dollars per credit hour? What does that take?
Uh, yes, sir. I believe it was very close to that, and it still keeps us in the middle of the pack where we have. Again, we're, we're kind of seeing all of our peers, and that's still kind of what, uh, as of February, not everybody had posted their fees. But that is kind of what most of them are considering, um, inflationary, for lack of a better word, right now. So it does, uh, this increase does not necessarily, um, jump us out of line, kind of being in the middle to lower side of the tuition. So we're still on the lower side for our in-district. And as in previous years, we're in the higher side, though, for out-of-district and international. Because that's always been the philosophy, that we wanted to make sure that our in-district folks paid a lot less or significantly. So.
In-district is a tremendous bargain.
Correct. Yes, it's still, it's a bargain compared to our peers. So. Questions or concerns about that? I don't want to answer. This is, so this was kind of to your point, is kind of where we would, we would still be below the state median even with that increase. Uh, and so again, a student taking twelve semester credit hours is at a, um, thirteen thirty, uh, per, you know, per semester, which is significantly less, um, than what, uh, again, our peers are doing. So. Um, so then again, and I've just spent a ton of time going through this because I know in the patent property taxes, y'all spend a lot of times talking about that and defeasements and all those fun things that we want to talk about. But I did want to have it in here, at least as a reference, as we talk about property taxes, again, that is still an unknown for us. Um, as you all remember, you did approve, uh, the tax rate for FY twenty-four at the point, uh, ten seven six rate. Uh, we did increase homestead exemption. We did fee, the fees, uh, a great deal of bonds for us for, uh, last year. And so, uh, we have still continued to, uh, raise and, uh, what we have been contributing. Again, this separation, uh, from the red is on our INS is because we did defeat so many bonds and we did save taxpayers' dollars by paying back, um, debt early. Um, the question really is, is when you look about, look at the certified property values across Texas, you can kind of see where our peers were last year with us. We were able with our defeasement to stay at the point ten seven or lower it, um, which was a, a minimal of a point two percent. Had we not defeated, we would have actually had to lower the rate, uh, which would have been a ten and a half percent. So that just kind of shows you where our peers are, uh, for the community college related to Texas having very healthy, as we know, um, property tax evaluation. Our goal for FY twenty-five is to maintain the same rate, if at all possible. We have been meeting with the bond council and the bond attorney several times over the last couple of months to see if we can do that. That will be based off of what we find out in April in terms of what our growth is. We spent considerable amount of time the last few weeks with the, uh, taxing departments of all the counties that are in our district, trying to get an estimate of where we think we're going to land. Many were more hesitant than others to kind of give us a true evaluation or, or to give us a straightforward answer. We're anticipating based off some own internal research that we're, our growth could come out about seven percent. And again, while our goal is to maintain the rate with that, we don't know if defeasement will be possible again. That's what the bond group is looking at is to see. And that's because a lot of the bonds, depending on their issuance and the terms and the year, whether we can pay them back or not pay them back with a penalty. So they're looking at that right now, uh, to give us an idea of what we would have to defeat. Um, and so what we're trying to avoid to do is to, we don't want to necessarily have to lower rate. We may not have a choice depending on how the rates come back. So we're hoping for the best case scenario with that we can defeat bonds or that we can keep it iteration that doesn't, uh, make us do that. Or again, just as last year, we may have to look at increasing homestead and all those variables we would need to bring back to you again in May for consideration.
With respect to the, that estimated value growth, seven percent. In the past, I think it's been a lower number. Do you know, and it's been four, five, six, and then seven.
Um, I thought last year the growth in Montgomery County was like.
No, for budgeting purposes.
Oh, yeah. This is just for, um, this was, this was not recommended for the taxes, is what the tax authority may think that their property values may increase by.
Okay, all right. I just don't want us, as a board, to walk away from this meeting thinking that we're, we're, we're being conservative by estimating seven percent growth. It would be better for us to estimate growth for budgeting at four or five percent. And then once the certified values come out at the end of the year, certified values, not estimated values. The certified values come out at the end of the year, then we can bump off. But I don't want to go in, I say, I, I don't want to go into a budget planning process with a seven percent growth rate.
No, and we actually, this was just based up on what we thought they might come back with based on what they told us. Um, we're just really hoping that we can, you know, keep everything kind of level set with.
It may even be ten percent at the end of the day.
Yeah, we don't know.
Because it's Montgomery County and Harris County.
Yeah.
We don't have all of Harris County South. We have Harris County North, which is still growing. Got the Beltway, then we've got Montgomery County, and then San Jacinto doesn't count. It's minimal. And the other county is Oak?
Walker.
Walker, okay, Walker County. Or she's other.
So, you know, the, really too soon to tell. I just want you to, again, to kind of preface that we're, this is going to be a conversation again in May. The good thing is we have healthy tax base, right? The good thing is we're having healthy growth. The bad thing is because of the no new taxes and some of those rules, we do have to be cognizant of that. And so we're going to have to come back with some strategies to make sure that we, we keep that in line. We're going to have growth there. What they don't want us or won't allow us to have is too much growth there on the taxpayer. So that is, uh, the similar conversation that y'all had this time last year is, you know, do we give homestead? Do we increase? Do we defeat? So once we have those, um, you know, approximated values in April, we'll be able to come back with some recommendation from law and counsel as to where, where we stand with that and what that looks like. But because we defeated so much last year, it kind of limits our runway for what we can defeat this year. Uh, so again, I believe, uh, trustee Kane, you asked about reserves. And so right now we're at about a hundred and fifty-five million in cash reserves. Uh, the board policy only requires about twenty percent of the, um, overall cash. And, uh, right now, again, this was, um, at the last time, we were at about thirty-four point seven percent, uh, cash reserve. So. So again, this, just putting there in terms of our destination of the budgeted percentages and what we look at. Uh, we really do not plan to utilize, in the past, um, the budget was developed so that it actually was approved that six million of that come from, um, reserves to actually fund the O and M for the year. Uh, we will not be, uh, is our goal not to be going into cash reserves as a part of a structured, uh, budget in order to, uh, level set our budget for FY twenty-five. So we, our goal is that, um, if we're doing it right, we don't want to put any in and we don't want to take any out, right? That's the quickest, easiest way to tell us, we're healthy, we don't necessarily need to be putting more in, but we don't want to take anything out. So if we're doing our job, we want to spend the dollars made available to us and, uh, be able to use that for our faculty, for our students, for our program, and not necessarily just continue, um, to, um, you know, build up cash reserves. Uh, one of the things, just to point out, bonds, I alluded to it a little bit earlier. We are doing a full reconcili- reconciliation of our bonds and projects to see what's still outstanding, what we can still use on capital projects, uh, what can be defeats. And then again, there is still a big expenditure on our budget line every year of seven and a half million dollars in revenue bonds that we pay. We can't use tax revenues to pay that. That's a big hit right off the top. That's our state. That's the eight million dollars, right? Um, and so that's one of the things we're also looking at with counsel, figure out, uh, how we can pay that down or what we can do to try to eliminate some of that or give some flexibility back into the O and M. Because if we weren't paying on revenue bonds, that seven and a half million that can go back to students or to faculty and those sort of things. So we are working on law and council to see which, uh, what are some strategies that we can look to, uh, possibly do something there. So just giving you some highlights of that. And, um, I know I do talk fast here, so I want to make sure I allow question, time for questions or any additional information that y'all would like to, to see or.
Thank you, sir.
Very good.
I just want to thank you for
Yeah.
the work that you have done, hitting the ground running.
Well, thank you. It's really my honor. Well, thank you. It really is an honor and it's an honor to serve, uh, with the chancellor. I truly admire his leadership and the cabinet members and, and I appreciate all of you for your volunteerism and your work on the board. So it's really, uh, we're a small team but mighty, and we really are trying to just rebuild the culture and rebuild. Um, and I just thought, you know, like I said, I hope you leave here positive about it because I feel positive about where we are. But I do want to level set, uh, to trustee Sullivan's point, I'm trying to level set expectations to say, we really are back to basics with a lot. Rebuilding the team, rebuilding processes. Um, I'm very encouraged about where we're going. And, and when, uh, you know, we get the ship rode in the, the same direction of where, you know, it's really unlimited for us. And so I'm excited to be a part of that. So thank you for the opportunity to serve and for the, you know, to be along, uh, along for the journey. So.
Dr. Bian, I just have two. I have a question for you for the benefit of the board. One, I want to make sure that you and I are on the record, being recorded, and so I'm going to ask you this in front of the entire board. Uh, you and I have never, you have never given this presentation to me, correct?
Yes, sir.
So the board heard it along with me for the very first time, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you shared these slides with me, I think, two days ago for the first time, and I think you've made changes since I saw them.
Yes, sir.
Right? And aside from one slide having to do with, uh, the faculty pay that we are still trying to figure out with HR, did I tell you to make any edits to any of your slides?
No, sir, you did not.
So these are your slides and your presentation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Once in a journey, always.
Thank you. Thank you. We do have a lot of work to do and we're happy to do it. But like I said, we appreciate it and we, you know, we're going to get the job done and we just appreciate it. And then we'll come back with you as information. If you have questions and you want something timely, we're happy to present that for you. So.
Dr. Bian has been doing a great job.
Yeah, a great presentation.
Thank you. I will try to slow down. My Louisiana talking is, I, no, I try to get it all in. Well, if I can help you all with anything, please, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity. So. Yeah.
Okay, uh, we go to the next section, board. Uh, this, we're going to go into closed session. Uh, the board of trustees in accordance to section five five one, point oh oh one of the Texas government code, we'll move into closed session under. Uh, the board of trustees and important to section five five one, point oh oh one of the Texas government code will move into closed session under the following provision, uh, section five five one oh seven four personnel managers.
Trustee, some of you had something?
No, I don't. I just, uh, we're going to another closed session, is my understanding? Cause it, it, it's, it's contrary to the agenda. I was just asking.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to go. I just, I just, that's what we're doing, right?
Yeah, we'd like to reconvene this board retreat at four seventeen P M. And without further business to discuss, this board retreat is now adjourned at four seventeen P M.